Good evening, I'm about to call the Cranston City Council May Meeting to Order. Clerk, please take the roll.
President.
President.
Here.
President.
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 House of Representatives.
Here.
President.
Present. Everyone could please rise and join me in pledging allegiance. Pledging allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under public acknowledgements and commendations, we have a note to thank and commend the DECA winners from the various high schools. There were sixty-three DECA winners. Because of the majority of them, we've filled out the recognition certificates and given them to the head of DECA to let the council know at this point, we think there's going to be an event where the school committee, members of the General Assembly, and the state legislature will recognize these students, so we would give out our proclamations at that point. I will let you guys know if the date ends up getting scheduled and when it is, so councilmen can attend that would like to. This takes us on to public hearings. This is limited to docketed matters, so if you're going to speak at this point in the meeting, you speak for four minutes, and it will be limited to anything that's currently on the docket as a docketed item for us to discuss.
Ed Garcia, Director of Libraries, 67 Calloman Road. I am just here to speak, to ask the council for support of the resolution for state library aid. I know I sent out some background information to the council last week, but state law 2962 prescribed state aid to all public libraries at a level of twenty-five percent of the municipal appropriation. For several years, since 2009, we have not been at twenty-five percent. We made a big push last year with the help of this council and the Cranston delegation of the General Assembly, and $900,000 was added to state aid to libraries to get to twenty-three point six-five percent. This year, to get to the full twenty-five percent, would be an additional $835,000 that the General Assembly would have to add to state library aid, and that would bring approximately $44,000 to the Cranston Public Library. So I ask you for your support on the resolution, and I'm here to answer any questions if necessary.
Thank you, Director Garcia. Anyone else to speak on docketed items?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the City Council. Robert Murray, 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. I just wanted to stand in connection with the resolution underneath, under the Public Works Committee item for the abandonment of a portion of Oak Park Avenue and the change of zone ordinance found under your Ordinance Committee Agenda 4-1704. Both the Public Works Committee and the Orders Committee held lengthy discussion of both these items two weeks ago at your hearings. I don't intend to supplement anything that was said that night, because I think most members were there. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The only comment I wanted to correct for the record was, I believe, in response to a question from Councilman Stikos about whether or not a drive-through could go on this site, I indicated that I didn't think so upon further reflection and thinking about that. Speaking to our engineer, theoretically, one could be cited on this site, but it's, this is the intended end user of this change of zone and abandonment, as you know, is a Dollar General store. There will be no drive-through with that, but I did want to leave that thought out there, that somehow I created an impression you could never put a drive-through there. But I would urge passage of both the resolution for the abandonment and the change of zone ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. Good evening, Mr. Santori.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, President Freina. I'm just here speaking in support of the resolution of the legislation to fund the state aid to libraries twenty-five percent. I think that, I go to a library here twice a week, if not more, here in Cranston, and it's one of the best things we have. I think, if you haven't been there anytime recently to see what they're doing, I'm sure all of you will be there, or most will be there, for the opening of children's room at the central library, but I strongly encourage all of you to use services. They have a lot of great service there, and they deserve every penny they can get. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Mr. Santori, name and address for the reference.
Oh, sure. Thirty Egan Road, Cranston, Rhode Island.
I figured...
Thirty Egan Road, and my name is Robert Santori, Jr.
I figured being, you know, six or seven minutes in, then you'd be on point.
No, fine. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Santori.
My name's David DeMaio. I'm the president of Cranston West Alumni Association, 50 Preston Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. I'm here before you to ask for support for the resolution with the restoration of the Cranston West Alumni, which we hope to be called the Cranston West Alumni Auditorium. For those who haven't seen, this is actually the sample seat. I was here in front of the Finance Committee, and we didn't have the actual seat, so this is what will be replaced in the auditorium, hopefully over this summer, which will bring light to the auditorium. I think it's an opportunity for the council, and for the city, and for the residents, to partner with an outside concern, to use outside-funded money along with the help from the city to have something completed that is desperately in need. The auditorium hasn't been repaired since 1963. For anybody who's been in the auditorium, there's missing seats, they're bent, it's just atrocious. And that's the first thing that any future student to the high school will see. They come in, they have their summer barbecue, they're in the auditorium, they have parent night, and a lot of the family members look at it and say, how come this hasn't been taken care of after fifty-three years? So along with some of my other members that are here and some support, we collectively raised $100,000 to start the project, and we're looking for the city's support in any way, shape, or form to complete this project. With that being said, I just really would appreciate that the resolution passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMaio. Anyone else to speak on docketed items? If there being none, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Move on to Report of Committees. Safety Services and Licensing Committee, Council Majority Leader Pepalouskas. The floor is yours.
Mr. Council President, do we have resolutions first?
Oh, I apologize. I had an X on that already. I'm going too quick. We have a resolution. Resolution in support of legislation restoring funding for state aid to libraries to full twenty-five percent, sponsored by Council President Farina.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second. Under discussion, Councilman Lanning.
I'd like to co-sponsor that, if you don't mind, Council President.
Of course not. Any other cosponsors? Councilman Pepalouskas, Councilman Arquette, Councilman, Councilman Pivickio, Councilman McCauley, and I think that'll make most of us. So thank you for sponsoring the resolution. I'm sure the libraries will appreciate it. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCauley?
Yes.
Councilman Akell?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Pepalouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Pivickio?
Yes.
Yes. Now we will move on to Report of Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. For Safety Services and Licensing, we have Class B Victorin Liquor Cochi Cranston LLC at 1776 Plainfield Pike.
Motion to approve. I have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
We don't have everybody take one.
Did I hear a second? Thank you. Motion, a second, under discussion.
I'll try and go downstairs and...
Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman McCauley?
Yes.
Councilman Akell?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Pepalouskas?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to the Finance Committee, Council Vice President Pivickio.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have a resolution in support of Cranston West Auditorium Project, sponsored by Council President Farina, co-sponsored by Councilmen Colfer and Lanning. This was approved, I don't know if this went to committee, this went before the Finance Committee, and we debated this for quite a while, actually. Mr. D'Amico spoke, asked that it be brought before the full council and approved.
Do I have a motion approved?
Motion approved.
I have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman McCauley. Under discussion, Councilman Stikos.
At the Finance Committee meeting, I expressed concern that the resolution was too broad, and the gentleman from the Alumni Association said he was hoping for a unanimous vote. So I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution under the, there are three resolves on the second page, and I would just add, my amendment would add, no city funds will be spent on the project without council approval. So...
I'll second that.
If I could explain.
I have a...
The, I just, I think we, if we're going to approve, if the money, if money is going to be spent by the city on the Cranston West Auditorium, there should be a specific vote by the council within a specific dollar amount. And, so that's my, the purpose of my amendment.
Under discussion? I see no further discussion. I do have a question before we vote. So, to my solicitor or the city solicitor, by changing the resolution and making Councilman Stikos's addition, would we give ourselves purview over the budgetary change, spending of the capital? So by changing the resolution to say, without council approval, would we have any approval? So anybody from the administration?
Mr. O'Neal.
Tonight, before you, is a resolution. It's not an ordinance, so if there was money to be spent, it would have to come back to the council through an ordinance, and at that time, I believe the council could vote if there was money to be spent on a yes or no basis. Right now, I don't think there's been anything that's been set aside for any money to be spent by the city at this point. I have a couple ideas that could help this project go forward, but I think, I think the resolution needs to be passed first, and then we can discuss money in the future by ordinance, not by a resolution.
Thank you. Councilman Stikos.
I think I also had asked at a meeting, that Mr. Kirshenbaum was going to research whether the, this fund that we set up with $400,000 in it, named contingency, whether that fund could be spent by the mayor on, what that could be spent on. And I know everyone says it's going to be for the schools, but times change and situations change, and, so I was curious about the answer to that, which I think also relates to this proposal.
Sure. The question that I remember being asked was about a $152,000 account?
At the time, it was...
Okay. I was unaware of that. The question I'd asked the finance director was, was this $152,000 for the auditorium? And he told me, no. So...
Okay. Councilman Stikos, are you all set?
There really wasn't an answer to my question, but...
Well, maybe. Maybe I can help you.
I'll try again. The contingency fund set up now is apparently $400,000 for the school, and there's been no money set aside to date for the auditorium.
Well, I think I have a... My question isn't what the, my question was if there's an account in the city, in the budget, called contingency, and does the mayor have the power unilaterally to spend that as he sees fit?
is set aside for the school, for the school department budget, as was made very clear, to pay school expenses. That's what the money's there for.
So the answer to my question is no, he does not have the authority to spend it on whatever he wants.
Whatever he wants? That's a very broad question.
Well, it's a very vague word, contingency.
It's not... My understanding is this is the exact arrangement that was in place at least two times in the past, and the money was spent for the schools, for a special education supplement program, and for middle school sports. That's what the money is there for, that's what it'll be spent on.
I just find it interesting, no one can answer that question directly, so...
Councilman Pivickio? I mean, it's a little off-topic. I let Councilman Stikos go with it, because I wanted to see if he could get the answer to his question, so try to keep it on the auditorium project.
Maybe this helps. I mean, I think if the contingency doesn't occur, then the money falls into the general fund, so then it becomes part of the city's money. But it doesn't, you can't switch it from school project to, you know, another building project or something other than school-related issues. As a matter of fact, we were specific that it was related to, you know, the decision by the state, by RIDE, not to give them sufficient funds to run the, to do the free lunch program. So I think what you're asking is what happens? Well, yeah, so it befit, falls into the general fund, then I suppose the administration has some control over that money, but the question is, they have to keep it put aside until that issue has been decided, or whether the contingency doesn't arise. And many times, like in the special education budget, that we don't, they have to keep it aside until next June 30, because something could happen, you know, one day before the end of that fiscal year. So a contingency fund with a specific purpose, I think is as specific as you can get. Obviously, if something else happened dramatically in the school department, they might ask us to, you know, authorize that payment to go to something else, but I don't think it's a slush fund. I don't know, you know, it's, it's got a contingency attached to it, it's in a special line item on our budget.
That's an answer to my question. Does the administration agree with that answer?
Okay, so, Mr. Kirshenbaum can answer, but...
I can answer. I don't, I don't work for the administration, so I work for the city council, but my interpretation is, the budget itself is an ordinance, so this council has passed by ordinance a contingency fund to be used by the mayor for a contingency for the schools. You vested him with that discretion through the budgetary process, which was adopted by an ordinance. So that's where we are with that money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if you recall, Councilman Stikos, I think we even stated that, I think you wanted to list it as contingency for, say, school department, and we said, we didn't feel that would be necessary. We felt just contingency, because it's directed to the school department, and the school department is going to submit to me bills that I will review and send over to them for payment from that 400 and some odd thousand dollars, which they've been short-changed by the state of Rhode Island.
Thank you, Director. Any other discussion on the auditorium resolution?
The amendment.
On the amendment? None? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
No.
Councilman Hopkins?
No.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman McCauley?
No.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
No.
Councilman Pepalouskas?
No.
Councilman Westman Pivickio?
No.
No. Councilman Arquette?
On the resolution...
On the resolution, sir.
Mr. President, yes. My only concern is, this resolution says it's going to want to get some funding for the auditorium, but doesn't specify an amount. It's like you're giving the entity a blank check, and that's my concern. But knowing the administration's frugal fiscal policy, I will support the resolution. Thank you.
Point of information, the intent is basically like an up-to and including, so if we can get a laborer to go over there and paint a wall, and that'll be something we can, the city can give, or if we can get $200 to buy a seat, it's up-to and including funding. So, one of the strict budgetary concerns that we have, we know it's going to be difficult, but we're asking the administration to do everything in their power to help with this project. Councilman McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to compliment Mr. DeMaio for his hard work and the efforts of the Alumni Association. I will be supporting this wholeheartedly, sir, and I congratulate you.
Councilman Pivickio?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, his presentation at the Finance Committee was excellent, and it showed it was a public, it was really a private partnership with the city, and basically, most of the heavy lifting was done by the outside organization. They raised $100,000 of private capital to upgrade a city building, which to me, we don't, I don't, I haven't seen that anywhere else in the city. Cranston East was redone, but that was done with federal and state money, I believe. So I think that, you know, we should be supporting this. Obviously, we have tight budgetary constraints, but if we can do some in-kind service to help with the labor and materials, I don't see that benefiting anyone but the citizens of Cranston and the city council, because now we don't have to improve that, part of that building with general funds. So I think it was, it's a great testament to what the graduates did and what his organization has done, so I think we should really applaud this kind of effort, because if we could get those kind of private funds raised elsewhere in the city, we could do an awful lot of things, so I certainly will support it.
Councilman Lanning, then Mr. DeMaio.
Thank you, Council President. For a private entity to raise $100,000 to go into our school system to fix an auditorium is admirable. You did a great job. But to talk about, we're going to paint the walls and do a few minor things on the city's side, we got a $285 million budget, nobody can tell me you can't, we can't come up with some money, cash, to help this project along and get those seats put into that auditorium without this organization having to go out and raise another $100,000. I'm sure there's money available somewhere in this budget, and I hope the administration will look at it in that light, rather than we'll use manpower to paint walls. To me, that's not really going all out to help this organization that sat down and worked their butts off to raise that kind of money for this auditorium.
Mr. Kirshenbaum?
If I could respond to Councilman Lanning, I completely agree with what Councilman Lanning just said. I myself was moved by the presentation by Mr. DeMaio. I'm a graduate of Cranston West myself, and I have a check for him tonight from myself for a sum of money to put towards the auditorium. And I thank him for this project.
Thank you, Attorney Kirshenbaum.
If I could just have one minute. The goal through this was, was to get out in advance of a problem that's going to occur. As I stated at the Finance Committee, when Cranston East had the issue, we know, thank you very much, we know that you had to float bonds and play interest for the auditorium and the gymnasium when NEAS came in to do their review. Cranston West is preparing for their NEAS review next year. We thought it would be simple if we could find a partnership to go out in advance of the problem, because we know that Cranston West is going to need an auditorium and a gymnasium once the review's complete. That's going to go on the back of the taxpayer. What we try to do as an organization is to raise the money to be in advance of this. So when NEAS came out and they says, wow, your auditorium looks great, the presentation's going to be, is there's an outside partnership that's willing to support the city and support the school system. And I think that's going to be favorable for the city, and I think it's going to put the city out in front of everything that goes on, and it's going to take some of the burden away from the taxpayer, because now we're in advance of the project. You wait those five years, that auditorium's probably going to be, need to be torn down and put back up. But if we can get out in advance of it in the long run, it's going to save money. And as I said in the other meeting, once we rip the seats out, repairs that were going to be costly are going to be done quicker and more efficient and financially sound, because the auditorium's going to have availability, because there's nothing going to be there, and they can be repaired. They're being put off now and exposing our children to issues, because they can't get at it. But with an outside partnership's help, that's going to pay for more than seventy-five percent of the cost, I think it's something the city has to look at, because I think it's a feasibly sound idea, and I think the residents would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pepalouskas?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I too will be supporting this resolution. I want to thank the Cranston West Alumni Association and Mr. DeMaio for all of your hard work. I know it hasn't been easy, it's been a long road, so thank you for everything you've done, and I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Colfer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say a couple things real quick. Obviously, I have a whole lot of family members, past and present, who are graduates of Cranston West, and as a member of this, as a former member of the school committee, I know we worked very hard to take care of all of our buildings, and the cost to do this is tremendous. And the fact that, not only did you go out and raise all these dollars, but ahead of that, you and a number of other individuals had to work extremely hard just to set up your 501(c)(3) to be able to do this, and the Alumni Association, of which some of my family members are members, worked extremely hard to do that. And the fact that they would help us offset our costs in the city, it just makes sense that we would honor them with this resolution, and certainly, I will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I will say my piece on it. The reason I submitted this resolution is because I wholeheartedly support the Cranston West Alumni Association. As a graduate of Cranston West, I have fond memories of that auditorium. I've had the luxury of being there recently, several times, seeing that this repair has fallen into, understanding that there is an outside organization willing to raise $100,000 to help us make a school a better place for our students, is something we have to get behind. This resolution asks the administration to do everything in their power to help support this project, as they build out their plan this summer, to partner with, with the Alumni Association to truly make Cranston West Auditorium a better place. We were lucky with Cranston East. We had a champion grant, we used some CDPG funds to update that auditorium. This is something that is needed in that school. So my hope is that the administration will work with the Cranston West Alumni Association and try to do as much as we can to get this updated over the summer for those students. I took great pride when I was a student at Cranston West, as a first-year student, to go in and sit in the auditorium as it was, and see all the class banners hanging there, and they were gifts from all the prior classes, and all how much people understood what it meant to have school pride, and I have school pride for my school. And my hope is that we can get this done, to continue that pride, so when people sit in that auditorium their first year at Cranston West, they understand that this was something that was given to them by the alumni. It's a powerful statement for school pride, and my hope is that we can get this done. That being said, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman McCauley?
Yes.
Councilman Akell?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Pepalouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Westman Pivickio?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have resolution authorizing real estate tax abeyance, this passed unanimously through the committee. Entertainer motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins? Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado? Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution Authorizing Motor Vehicle Tax Abeyments. It also passed unanimously in committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have the Tax Interest Waiver Approvals. This also passed unanimously in committee.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Yes.
And lastly, we have the Tax Interest Waiver Denials. This also passed unanimously.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Moving on to Public Works, Councilman Ken Hopkins, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, the ordinance is 317-1, Ordinance Amendment of Title 12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places. Snow removal three feet clearance sponsored by Councilman Stichos, and this passed unanimously in committee.
Have motion approved?
Motion approved.
I have motion approved. I have a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
No.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, that's all for Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Hopkins. Councilman General Pappalouskas for the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 4-17-03, Ordinance Amendment of Chapter 2.52, Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission alternate sponsored by myself.
Do you have motion approved?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
No.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
No.
Councilman Arcado?
No.
Councilman Colfer?
No.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
No.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman Arcado?
Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
Yes.
Councilman West, Councilman Vivekio?
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 Yes.
Councilman Colfer?
And this is an area that's different than the, we had one in, on Oaklawn Avenue in my area that I did go with the restriction with it no, I forget whether it was entertainment or it was some restriction that fit the neighborhood because it was, there was, there's a plat of houses right behind the, the location of that business. So I can see, and I think there was no drive-through on that location as well, it was on eight hundred Oaklawn Avenue, I believe. But, so I, I think Park Avenue at that intersection is such a commercial district, the C three, I really don't see there being any, any major issues. Plan review could check the, the traffic patterns, but we're conjecturing that there may be an application, you know, five, 10, 15 years from now.
Attorney Murray, did you have something you wanted to add before I go on to Councilman Lanny?
Just very quickly, Mr. Council President, just to assist the discussion, and I don't rise to support the amendment, I obviously oppose the amendment, I, I just want to share with you my experience. One of the troubles I have with the amendment is that it's overly broad. The city council, in the last adoption of the schedule of uses, there used to be a distinction between, you know, banks that had drive-throughs, we eliminated that. Now any bank is assumed to have a drive-through. Pharmacies are allowed to have drive-throughs. The only separate category we have is drive-in restaurants. And drive-in restaurants are allowed in a C three zone. So the ordinance says, the amendment that's proposed would theoretically eliminate a drive-through for a bank or pharmacy. This is a, a long-term lease agreement Dollar General's entering into with the property owner. I'll certainly be retired before this lease is up, as will most of these council members. But the, I said this to Councilman Stychos, and I think I said it at the ordinance committee meeting, if the council's will is to eliminate drive-throughs in a C three zone, then the proper mechanism for that is someone to propose an ordinance to amend the schedule of uses, to ban drive-in, drive-ins or drive-in restaurants in a C three zone. Respectfully, I don't think the way to do this is piecemeal on every change of zone application. You know, my clients or prospective applicants or developers, they just want to know what the rules are. And right now, the ordinance says you can have a drive-in restaurant in a C three. With respect to the process, speaking about traffic studies, things like that, the ordinance for, I think it's seventeen sixty-four of the zoning code relating to drive-in uses says that any application for a drive-in use has to go to the Development Plan Review Committee, which is the Public Works Director, the Planning Director, the Building Inspector, the Fire Department, and the Pub, and the Traffic Engineer. As, through that process, a traffic study is submitted to the Development Plan Review Committee. So we have the mechanism in place to make certain that any proposed drive-through can be done safely, designed appropriately, to allow for proper queuing, egress and ingress. If we're on a state highway, we need to get a physical authorization permit from DOT. So there are many checks and balances along the way. But respectfully, I just don't think this ordinance, this amendment is one that should be supported at this time. My client does not have any plans for a drive-through, but I just, on, on the principle of the thing, I don't think we should say, you know, in this case, no drive-through. And following up on just one last comment, you know, typically you see drive-throughs at intersections. It just, that's just the, you know, that's where they want to be. They're signalized. That's why you see Burger King at the Corner Park and Reservoir, you know, that's where most, most drive-throughs establish themselves. So for what it's worth, that's my experience, and I respectfully ask that my friend, Mr. Stychos' amendment be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. Councilman Lanny?
All right. Little general, doesn't want a drive-through, but it's going to be the ordinance on the, in the C three zoning. It may be a long-term lease, it may be 25 years. Twenty-five years from now, we don't know what's going to happen at that location. And that's the thing that bothers me. If we allow this, it's permanent. If you go back to C two, or you eliminated a drive-through, then that can be changed 25 years from now with a variance. There's no data whatsoever to say that we did a traffic study and there's plenty of room for a drive-through. I mean, I've been on Park Avenue at four o'clock in the afternoon going towards Knightsville, and the traffic backs up all the way to Nardolos. That, how do you queue that? You could be on Dyer Avenue going towards Budlong Road or vice versa, and there's traffic. And as far as that honeydew across the street, at one time when they were, when they were best eaten, and there was a good business there, that, that queue went all the way up Bud, Budlong Road to take a right into the, to that restaurant. There was no traffic study done there. So since there's no need for this at this point in time, why should we allow them to have a drive-through? So I'm going to be voting to eliminate the drive-through because I don't think it's necessary. Why do something that's not really necessary and can be fixed 25 years from now if that's the length of that lease? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Lanny. Councilman Arkado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm supporting Councilman Stychos' amendment only because the, the business entity has specified it's not going to have a drive-through. So what's the harm in passing this amendment? It's just going to substantiate what the business owner wants, and safeguard the community and the neighborhood if the owner sells to another company or corporation. So I'll be supporting this amendment.
Anyone else to speak before Councilman Stychos has another word? Councilman Stychos?
Yeah, I just, there are a couple of things we could do with this. One would be change, the zone changed to a C two. But Mr. Murray said in committee that the reason that they went with a C three was that there were different setback requirements in a C three that they, they preferred, or site location rules. And I think we all saw the plans, and the plans were, were, I thought, pretty good. So that's why I went with the approach of, okay, it's a C three, so you can have those, those rules on the site that produce a good plan, but let's restrict it on the, on the drive-through. And obviously, in the future, if the council, some business came in, you know, after a Dollar General and wanted a drive-through, a future council could remove that restriction.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
No.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Pauling?
No.
Councilman Arkado?
Yes.
Councilman Colford?
No.
Councilman Paploskis?
No.
Councilman Wettke?
No.
No. Now, the motion as written. The, I'm sorry, the ordinance is written. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Pauling?
Yes.
Councilman Arkado?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskis?
Yes.
Councilman Wettke?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on, we have ordinance four dash seventeen dash oh five, ordinance amendment of Title X, Chapter thirty-two, Dakota City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Knight Street, No Loading, sponsored by myself.
Do you have motion approved?
Motion approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. And discussion, Councilman Paploskis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd just like to say, this is a removal of some old loading zone signs that are at the corner of Knight Street and Cranston Street. They've been up since probably the Cardy Building. They're obsolete, and it did get a positive recommendation from the traffic engineer. So basically, we'd add some parking for some new businesses that moved into the neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilman Paploskis. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Pauling?
Yes.
Councilman Arkado?
Yes.
Councilman Colford?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskis?
Yes.
Councilman Wettke?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Colford, Claims Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to report out from the Claims Committee that attached is a report of settled claims listed here for informational purposes.
Thank you, Councilman Colford. Claims are listed. Anyone has any questions, please direct them to the clerk at a different time. Okay, public hearings. This is the time for the public to speak on any matter they so choose. So if anyone would like to speak on anything at all, four minutes. Name and address for the record.
Robert Santori Jr., that's S-I-N-T-U two Osmond I Jr., and thirty Egan Road, Cranston, Rhode Island. Good evening, council members. Just want to speak real quick on a couple of things from, that came up to my mind tonight. One earlier, I do recall in the budget hearings, they were really long, so I may have been sleep deprived after a certain point. But I do recall in the budget hearings for this, for the contingency fund and all that jazz that we were discussing here earlier, that there was going to be a resolution saying, hey, we're gonna, we say we're gonna put that money towards the schools. I didn't see it on the injunction of new business for June, and maybe it might come up in July or whenever the state budget is finalized. But that might help, you know, allay any concerns on both sides down the road. Secondly, I hope to see at some point in the near future, and the Claims Committee also discussed in the budget hearings, again, sleep deprived, about the claims between Providence and Cranston and Pawtucket that were discussed, about if there's been more in, say, Cranston versus other similar cities. Number three, I'm happy to see the council come together in support of Cranston West. I'm a Cranston West alum myself, two thousand and nine. And I agree with Councilman Lanny, what he said earlier, that we, $282 million, we should be able to find something to help out the auditorium. I remember back in two thousand and nine, it was already kind of in rough shape, so I can only imagine what another decade has done to the place. But I think Councilman Arkado had said it in a previous statement, what he called like almost a tale of two cities, where, you know, you have Cranston West being able to raise a hundred thousand dollars for a particular project. And while I think it's really admirable that they were able to do so, I don't think that should be a concerning factor going forward for the city maybe trying to find funds for similar projects. One other thing, two other things, actually. One, in terms of, what do you call it, drive-throughs just now, I live right off Park Ave on Egan. I don't know if you, I'm sure you guys all go down Park Ave quite often. I'm sure you all have seen to that Dunkin' Donuts on Park Ave quite often. And let me tell you something. Come here, it's between six AM and eight AM, and then between four and seven PM. And all the way down Park Ave, there's a line on the road to that Dunkin' Donuts. So just because it might at the time be a negative traffic report, which hasn't been done about drive-throughs, I think at some point, you know, hopefully there can be just one done in retrospect to see if it would be a negative impact. Because I know across the way where the bakery used to be before it closed down, that might one day become a drive-through as well. So you'll have three drive-throughs on a little area and a little gas station right there, which gets a lot of traffic as well. So it's just things to be concerned. One other thing I noticed, and this is just something of my own personal perspective. I don't know if maybe, does the city have a list of people, of registered lobbyists who lobby the city for ending a particular? Just curious. I just wonder because back when we were talking for hours here about the rules, a couple, a month ago now, actually, in the rules changes, there was a, then actually addition made to the rules that if you come to these meetings and you come as a speaker, you have to sign and say, if you're a lobbyist or something, for a, any organization or group or employer or whatever have you. And I was just wondering if that's going to be added to the paper going forward. I'm sure it's no oversight or whatever have you. But I just thought that'd be something really interesting to have in the city. But thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Santori.
Want a person to approve of this?
Of course.
My name was used, and I just want to clarify a few things. Recently, in the Providence Journal, there was an article pertaining to the western side of the city and the eastern side of the city. So it's self-evident that if you take a ride through my neighborhood, and you take a ride down to Phoenix Avenue, you can see the difference. And the auditorium just substantiates that, that the people, the western side of the city have the white-collar jobs that can hold fundraisers and raise hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve their auditorium, or have their little league fields light up at night. So that doesn't happen on the eastern side. Even though it doesn't, I was willing to help out, I was willing to help out the western side of the city because I think education comes first. Thank you.
I was a little outside person. For votes, Councilman Arkado. Anyone else in the public who is to speak on any non-Dockete item? Name and address to the record.
Albert Benetti, twenty-four Concord Avenue. Mr. Council President, members of the council. Haven't been at council meetings in a while, so I just came tonight to see how things have moved on since about ten, fifteen years ago. I see not much has changed. Let me, but one thing is, every time something's brought up, everyone's got to throw a little bit of politics in it. As far as the school goes, with the auditorium on Cranston West, it's amazing, in all these years, that we don't use school bonds for the proper issues, which is to maintain the school buildings, especially for the long-term assets. Rebuilding the auditorium, the seats are going to last five, 10, 15 years. So there's nothing wrong with using bond money for that. The point is that we should be using the school bonds every year to look at what maintenance needs to be done to our buildings. And as Michael Trafficante said years ago, and maybe this council will want to take this on, maintenance of the school buildings really belongs under the purview of the city, since the city has an engineering department and the school department doesn't. My only point is, I didn't attend school in the city. My daughters did, and my wife did, and she was a graduate of Cranston West. I do commend the people from that alumni for raising that money. But when you think of it, money from like the Alumni Association or England's extra money for the school department, that should be used for extra things that the school department doesn't normally provide. The city, we have a $285 million budget now? Wow. It's not about finding the money, because we all know every penny's spent. And how it's spent, that's always been the issue. I don't really feel like getting into that tonight. But the bottom line is, if we brought the school department maintenance under the city's engineering department, then every year, a study could be done for all of our school buildings to determine how much longer we're going to keep them, and that any long-term repairs then would be, come under the city and would be followed through. And if needed, bond money could be used for these type of projects. Because when you really come down to it, every school auditorium is used multiple times throughout the school week and years, especially to introduce new parents, for special occasions. So the Cranston West auditorium should have never gone into this deplorable condition in the first place. So just a point, maybe someone would look at it about bringing, like I said, school building maintenance under control of the city, and maybe seeing if presently there is some bond money available that could be used with the private money raised to fix Cranston High School West. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item? Seeing no additional, that portion of the meeting is closed. Moving on to election of city officials. Under Board of Canvases, the Republicans have an appointment for a member and an alternate. Looking at their submitted brief for the member, they have chosen Gary Viera, who is at ten Apple Hill Drive, Cranston, Rhode Island, oh two ninety-one. Would the Majority Leader of the Republican Party make a motion to appoint Gary Viera as the member on the Board of Canvases?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Pauling?
Yes.
Councilman Arkado?
Yes.
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 Councilman Wettke?
Yes.
Yes. The second name as the alternate, the Republican Party has chosen Dolores DeMeo-Carroll.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Dolores DeMeo-Carroll as an alternate.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Stychos?
Yes.
Pauling?
Yes.
Arkado?
Yes.
Colford?
Yes.
Paploskis?
Yes.
Yes. Report of city officers. Good Director Koop a moment, he's conferring with the Before we move on, I have to go back to election of city officials. We actually, it's not on the docket, the Democrats will need a name as well. If they're not prepared this evening, we would, yeah, we'd need to come from the city committee. So I know you had three appointments on there if you'd like to reappoint, but we'll need a name for the Democrats as well. So to the minority leader, if you could confer with your party's chairman.
No name has been submitted to me this time, so we can do this at the next meeting, I'm sure. I'm sure it's not a
Not a pressing issue.
Pressing matter.
If you could confer with your party chairman.
I will have to confer with the party chair. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Board of city officers. I see nothing listing on, listed on the docket, there are no reports besides the general legal, have we got the legal and all that wonderful stuff? Anyone from the administration? Next section. Okay. Executive Communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. A report on hiring has been distributed to the council members. As far as an update on the Oak Hill Terrace Playground, we have had additional talks with DEM and hoping to work out a funding source very soon before, before the fall, as we had originally thought. And I will simply report claims settled by the solicitor, Joseph "Mervat" Ferreira, as parents of the minor Michael Ferreira, and their attorneys, Owen and Penza, seventy-five hundred for personal injury. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Koop. Councilman Stychos, you have a question?
Yes, on the, on page eighteen of the legal fees, the outside legal expenses, I noticed that there are monthly, almost monthly bills to do with Stephen Antonucci. And I wonder why we're still paying legal bills to do with, with him?
Mr. President, I will, I will ask Ms. Marino to clarify. That is a, that is in relation to an ongoing legal matter in which Mr. Antonucci is a defendant who, because of his position at the time of the lawsuit, is entitled to be defended by the city. So that is actually a cost that's incurred by the city defending one of its former employees that, that is not the legal matter that in the past was, Captain Antonucci was the centerpiece of a different legal, this is a completely different matter. So that should really be clarified, and I'll ask Ms. Marino to clarify that on the next monthly report.
Is that the Gilbo?
Exactly. Yes.
So it's paying for legal representation for him?
Exactly.
In the Gilbo matter?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions on legal bills or Councilman Lanny?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to get from Mr. Strom probably, and I know we can't do it right now, the total cost, the total legal cost that's cost the city of Cranston on this Gilbo thing, this ongoing suit. I know that we have to pay the legal fees for all the defendants who work for the city or being sued. But the total legal cost, if these figures in front of me are a small indication of what they total, I'm sure the city council should know how much we have spent to date in legal fees in this particular case.
Thank you, Councilman Lanny.
And I'd like to have that by the next Finance Committee meeting, if you don't mind.
Director Strom's shaking his head yes, so hopefully by the Finance Committee meeting, we will see that report for you. Any additional questions on the legal expenses? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next section of the docket, which is Council President Communications. So this evening, we passed a resolution supporting the Cranston West Alumni Association. The goal here is that it provides the city with a third-party source of funding to upgrade a building. I know one of the gentlemen who spoke asked if we had any purview over school buildings. Unfortunately, the city council does not. That would all come from the school committee. And that's kind of how this charity got started, that the auditorium, though it's a needed project, was something that kept getting kind of pushed. And the Alumni Association took it upon themselves to try to raise money to push it to the forefront. So we thank them for that. I know that things happen on the western side of the city, but I view Cranston as one Cranston. I try not to view it as two distinct cities. You know, I have the luxury of living half my life on each side of this city. A lot of people like to say that because I live in a small house in the western side of the city, that I'm a western Cranston councilman. But they fail to remember that from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and nine, I lived on Concord Ave. My father actually still lives in the home. I have friends that attended east and friends that attended west. I don't view them any differently. I don't view their class any differently. What I think the one Cranston initiative will give us is the change that demographics of this city are changing, that time is changing who lives in Cranston. And I want to see those people brought together under one flag, that as demographics change and people from the eastern side move to the western side, or people move from Providence into Cranston, that we treat this like it's one Cranston. So I support that initiative. It's been great, that's been getting some press. Two other things before I move on. We've noticed some concern from our residents regarding a road change by Providence around the area of Roger Williams Park. I've received several phone calls from several constituents abutting the concern that the Providence City Council has made changes that will take effect June first, that will affect how traffic patterns around Roger Williams Park are put. We will be submitting a resolution to urge the Providence City Council to reconsider those changes and look at the impacts to Cranston, because I believe at this point, they have not done that. And we additionally, we also submitted a resolution under Councilman Paploskis through National Grid. We support the idea of making National Grid fix their roads that they rip up immediately, and putting the roads back in the same condition they found them. A huge problem in this city is street paving. We had to pass a $20 million bond to improve the roads in this city. And I will tell you, a lot of these roads that are defunct are because Providence Water, National Grid come in, rip them up, and do a patch job, and leave. So we will be, I will be supporting that resolution. Thank you, Councilman Paploskis, for, for getting it in under the gun as quickly as you did. So we have a lot of business coming up for the next few months. I know it's summer, a lot of people will be on vacation, but hopefully the chamber's been full of late. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that it will continue to be full, and people will come out and support the good work we're doing. That will close Council President Communications. Councilmember Communication, Councilman Stychos, you are on the list.
Yes. I have an item that's been on the list for, on the agenda to do with adding points for job applicants who speak a foreign language. But just to explain, I don't know if I've explained this to this council, but in November, I had a resolution before the council that proposed that applicants, job applicants get an additional five points if they speak a foreign language that is commonly spoken in Cranston. And I, I believe it stated that those languages would be Spanish and Khmer, the language that is commonly spoken in Cambodia. And at the hearing, Director Koop said that really the proper way to do this, well, first, he said that the administration supported this idea, and that the proper way to do it would be for him as the Personnel Director to submit a Personnel Rule that would then be, come before the council for a vote. would then be, come before the council for a vote. So it's been November, December, January, February, March, and we're now in April, so it's, it's five, actually, we're in May, aren't we? It's six months, this is a six-month anniversary of that commitment from Mr. Koop. And I'm really wondering why this hasn't been done, and what the administration plans to do, if anything, or why was that commitment made if six months later, nothing has happened?
Maybe the new Personnel Director could, could take care of that.
No, I had a question for the administration. I wanted to hear the, I didn't want to pass it off to somebody else.
Councilman, I tell the truth when I stand at this microphone, and when I tell you the administration supports this idea, when I tell you I support this idea, I'm not lying. I've been covering two full-time jobs for two and a half years. Unfortunately, when I have hiring, terminations, employee training, urgent issues that need to be addressed on a day-to-day basis, this cannot be at the top of the list. It will be on the list. I'm thankful that the council has finally seen the light to hire a full-time Personnel Director for this city. It will be on the list for that full-time Personnel Director. But decisions have to be made every day about the way this city operates, and unfortunately, filling vacant positions has to come ahead of bonus points. I do support the idea, the administration supports it, the mayor supports it. We run this city, in some cases, on a shoestring budget, and this is the impact of those decisions.
Thank you. Do you have any additional?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on that. I think it is a demonstration of, of the administration's lack of, of concern for developing a workforce that reflects the population of the city. We have a population that's 27% minority, and we have a workforce that is 2% minority, and that's a problem, and it's a big problem now. It's not a problem, you know, next summer, when the Personnel Director maybe gets around to doing something. And that's why, and it's a problem, it's not a Republican problem. It's a Democratic, Democratic problem and a Republican problem, but it needs to be addressed. It's not a complicated problem to write a Personnel Rule as I proposed. You could have taken the one that was written by Pat Quinlan and altered it, and we could get on with it. But instead, we've had delay, delay, and I think, as was said very clearly, it's just not a priority, and it should be.
Councilman Fivickio.
Thank you, Council President. Well, in response to that, I'd like to say that we, you know, the council took the last two years defeating the position of a Personnel Director who could have addressed some of these issues. There are collective bargaining agreements you have to deal with, the labor unions have to weigh in, we may violate some other rules. Mr. Koop has not had the time to dedicate to Personnel Office. His time has been split. We have a part-time, we've had a part-timer. I know someone tried to apply for, for a vacancy, and it was, the Personnel Office wasn't open. There was no one to, to speak to. So to suggest that the administration hasn't tried, they've been trying for two years to get a full-time Personnel Director that works directly for the administration and that could address these kind of issues, and address the diversity issues that you've been very eloquent about raising, and we all agree that those things are, are important to us in a changing city, but to suggest, and you're right, it's not a partisan issue, but this council has failed over the last few years to, to, to consider the necessity for a Personnel Director. So I can understand Mr. Koop's frustration, because he just does not have enough time to, to make this his highest priority when he's got so many other issues to deal with.
Thank you. Councilman Arquette, we've had a point and a counterpoint, so if you have additional Councilmember Communications.
I just want to echo my concern about hiring more diversity in the city, representing the eastern side of the city, representing the island and section of the city. I would like to see more minorities hired, the city's employees. As far as the Personnel Director, I sat on this council when the Vice President voted to remove the Personnel Director, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct?
That's because it was a classified position at the time.
But I am correct, that you voted to remove.
That is correct, and I also voted to put it on the ballot to, to declassify it, and it was struck down by the then Democratic majority.
For the record, myself and Councilman Cian, we voted to keep the Personnel Director. I've always been on the side of having a Personnel Director, I want to make that clear. Thank you.
I think we agreed on that. It was just the classification issue.
Gentlemen, anyone else like to speak on a Councilmember Communication? That portion of the meeting is closed. All business, there is no new, all business, introduction of new business.
Proposed ordinance 5-1701, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled zoning change of zone for 275 Atwood Avenue, petition filed by 275 Atwood LLC, referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on June 15. Proposed ordinance 5-1702, an amendment of Title 12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled sidewalks, street sidewalks in public places, sidewalk reconstruction cost share program, sponsored by Councilman Stikus, to be referred to Public Works for hearing on June 15. Proposed ordinance 5-1703, authorizing the city to utilize Western Library impact fees for capital projects at Central, Knightsville, and Okolona branches, sponsored by Council President Farina and Council Vice President Fivickio, referred to Finance Committee for hearing on June 5. Proposed ordinance 5-1704, ratifying the attached memorandum of agreement between the City of Cranston and the Teamsters Local Union 251, for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, sponsored by Mayor Feng, to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on June 5. Proposed ordinance 5-1705, an amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, titled mode vehicles and traffic, Malvern stop sign removal, sponsored by Councilman Stikus, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on June 15. Resolution naming the Cranston Senior Services Center the Michael A. Trafficanti Senior Services Center, sponsored by Councilman Hopkins and co-sponsored by Council President Farina, referred to Public Works for hearing on June 15. Resolution supportive House Bill 6204, an act relating to maintenance of town roads and urging passage by the General Assembly. This is restoration of roadways by utilities, placing fines, sponsored by Council President Farina, Council Vice President Fivickio, Councilman Hopkins, Colford, and Paplouskas, referred to Public Works for hearing on June 15. The following claims will be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on June 5. These are all property damage claims. Johnson Saldivar, April 23, 2015, Angelo, March 3, 2017, Su Chin, March 14, 2017, Rena Crispo, March 23, 2017, Louis Pittsley Jr., April 5, 2017, Lisa Layden, March 2, 2017, Janice Easton, April 3, 2017, Kathleen Palumbo Santos, April 21, 2017. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can I have a motion to send the business to the proper committees? I have a motion and a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Looks like there's some miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk. There's a zoning map with J.S. Correction dated April 25. The stay, the city council's next regular meeting will be held on Monday, June 26, 2017. If there is no further business to come before the body, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for participating this evening, have a good night.